Mr. DiFilippo.
President.
Mr. Hertzler.
Here.
Mr. Eckberger. Deputy Controller DeGrosa.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment regarding salary report? Hearing none, we have minutes of August 29th meeting. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of salary report action. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business to be brought in front of the salary board? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So.
For adjournment. Can you please rise for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to call a regular Board of Commissioners meeting in order. Jim, another vote call, please.
Mr. DiFilippo.
Still here.
Mr. Hertzler.
Here.
Mr. Eckberger.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any thing that's not on the agenda this afternoon?
Well, my public comment, my name is Dr. McCray. I received my mail at P O Box 341, Nuvo P I. What I would publicly comment on is an agenda item, so should I wait until?
We'll wait till then.
Till then?
Yes, thank you. We'll get to it pretty quick.
Okay. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes of August 29th. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval of personnel transactions noting a change for Christine Heckendorf. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
So.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval of children and youth services needs based budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval of Resolution 2016-24 bids for sale of county property. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of motion to authorize sale of tax-free bureau depositors property. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval of submission of credit application to Castle Branch. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval memorandum of understanding between Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and Big Spring School District, the school resource officer. Mr. McCray, you have a public comment?
I do.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Chairman DiFilippo. Commissioner Darko, Commissioner Hertzler. I did telephone the solicitor this morning and gave him the citation to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which I think, the Supreme Court case, which I think is dispositive of this matter. Basically, I urge you to reject the memorandum of understanding and failing an out-and-out rejection at this time. I urge the board to table approval of that motion in order to give your county solicitor an opportunity to research the legal issue of how to base with him. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to get him the case earlier than today, but he has a copy of it. I think, basically, sheriffs and sheriff deputies do not, under our law or constitution, have authority to act as school resource officers. I think, and if I may be permitted to, with my meeting glasses, our Supreme Court has said that, in the case of Commonwealth versus Marconi, which was decided on January 22nd, 2013, that binding majority decisions of this court confirm the general understanding that express statutory authorization is required for independent investigations by sheriffs and/or their deputies implicating constitutionally protected interests of the citizenry. Going on further, the court said, "In the absence of express statutory authorization, a straightforward application of its general rule recludes sheriffs and their deputies," in this case was about sobriety checkpoints, but it says, "recludes sheriffs and their deputies from independently establishing and conducting sobriety checkpoints." Two other Supreme Court cases reviewed the statutory authority which addresses sheriff's powers, explaining that the General Assembly has limited the powers and duties of sheriffs to those authorized or imposed upon them by statute. And that is found in Title 13 of Prudential Statutes, Section 40, where it says that "Constables, county detectives, sheriffs, deputy sheriffs, waterways patrolmen, and game protectors shall perform all those duties authorized or imposed on them by statute." There is no specific statutory authority for sheriffs or deputy sheriffs acting as school resource officers. At the end of the Marconi decision, the court said, again, talking about sheriffs and deputies, "We reiterate, however, that they are not police officers, nor are they invested with general police powers beyond the authority to arrest for in-presence, breaches of the peace, and felonies in the absence of express legislative designation." And again, there has never been any express legislative designation giving sheriffs or deputy sheriffs the authority to act as school resource officers. There are at least two House bills which have been introduced in the General Assembly. First of them that I saw was House Bill 2601, the session of 2012, and the most recent of them was House Bill 733, which was introduced in the session of 2015. Both of those bills died in committee. The most recent of them, the 2015 case, was referred to the Judiciary Committee on March 6th, 2015, and nothing more happened. In that House bill, there's a specific section which says, "Powers and duties of sheriff and deputy sheriff, subsection D. A sheriff may serve as a school resource officer." So, what, we may sometime or other, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, have a specific designation allowing sheriffs to act as school resource officers. We do not at the present time. Again, I urge the board to either reject this memorandum of understanding or failing that, to table it so that your solicitor can review the matter. I feel very strongly about this, such that I'm willing to litigate it, either through declaratory judgment or any other type of civil action that will be required to show that I'm correct in my analysis of the law. Thank you.
Mr. McCray, thank you for coming out today, and I think our solicitor's policy will review whatever it is you're going to provide to him.
I've already given him a copy.
I do, thank you.
Thank you for calling me, Mr. McCray, before this meeting.
You're welcome.
Few people would give me the opportunity to know that this would be covered.
It was the polite thing to do.
It was, thank you.
All right.
But if the solicitor, he has any initial reaction?
I don't. I really don't. To look at this case in particular and the House bill is important.
We can proceed with approval of this, though subject on your comments.
Yes, subject to determining whether it's appropriate or valid for the sheriff to do this.
All right, so that is an option we do have. For what it's worth, I know other counties have SROs. That may or may not have any impact on your decision, and we, Board of Commissioners, we depend on legal interpretation from our solicitor. We are not attorneys. But based on what we're hearing, our solicitor will review the information you have, so that this board may proceed to approve this action based on contingency. Solicitor comes back to us and said, "It's either valid or not valid," so we do have the option.
So, what question does, are, I guess I may direct this to the Sheriff's Department a few more seconds. Or, is there a time constraint here that makes action necessary now? We're faced with a choice of either giving approval contingent on the solicitor's approval or simply allowing him to do his piece first. Is there a compelling reason why it would require action too?
Other than the training that is scheduled for the school resource officer, that training is scheduled to take place, I don't have the exact dates, but it's the first date of October. So it is within the next three weeks.
Jim, any questions?
Well, I don't want to put our sheriff or his deputy on the spot here, but do you have any comments to the information that's been presented to us here today? I mean, as I had understood when we discussed this, and we understand the difference between police officers and sheriffs, and their duties and responsibilities, and one of them is that they do not have investigatory authority. We understood that, that if there would be any incident at the school in their capacity serving as a resource officer, that that would be investigated by the local police. So, we felt that, you know, considering this, that we were looking forward, but if there's something that would come up in your examination of the law where it needs to be, they need to be expressly authorized for this. I mean, I think, the other point I would make too, is that in terms of the arrangement here, what we talked about is that there would be no cost at all borne by the county that this resource officer was going to be fully funded by the Big Spring School District. So, you know, those are some of the questions that I had and that we had previously discussed. But this I'll ask first, solicitor on the spot. What can you think? Do you have a recommendation for us of this at this point?
I don't either. You table the matter or you can't prove it, subject to my perspective determination that the arrangement as opposed to this legal.
So, with seeing this kind of, we proceed that way, that's, I would favor that direction.
Let me, I have one question, just for clarification. So, as I understand it, what was the role that for this resource officer, I would explain to us, predominantly education and relationship building to the?
No, no investigation.
That's what I'm getting at, is predominantly education and relationship building, and it would not be investigative. In fact, I think the point was made at the original meeting to separate those out so that the investigatory role is not interfering with the trust that needs to be established between students and the SRO.
Absolutely.
So, the question I guess I would ask Mr. McCray, just for clarification, is that investigatory role, the nature of your, is that the specific objection that you had?
Practically speaking, there will rarely be any in-sight offenses for the school resource officer. I mean, it's a situation where he will be there, and when anything that happens at the school will not be, will not have happened in his view. So he's dead in the water before he even gets started if he has no power to investigate. And I think the only power that he has, which the Supreme Court has said is there, is to arrest for in-view misdemeanors or breaches of the peace.
Okay, and that's by the nature just of being sheriff's office, that they have to essentially be in place when is something, and no other law enforcement office is available?
Well, they have to call them, and they'd have to do the investigation, the arrest, the follow-up, whatever else is required.
But I think that's the intent here anyhow, because it was?
Yes.
Apology, so, okay.
And it probably wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't be local, it probably wouldn't be local police department. It would probably be the Pennsylvania State Police, because the Big Spring School District has made it quite clear that to work with the Nuvo Police Department is just beyond the expense that they're willing to bear at this point in time.
So the nature, I'm mischaracterizing this, you can let me know. The nature of your objection is really a civil rights objection, as opposed to, say, a resource objection?
No, it's, it's based upon the lack of any express designation in statute or by constitution for sheriffs to do that kind of work. I think that there are a couple of bills that are meandering somewhere out there in the legislative cosmos, but when, if ever, they will become law is problematic at this time, so.
I think the question we have is before us is the education and relationship building role is what has been described to us as the role. So, at this point, I'm not qualified to measure something, so I'm just going to rely on the solicitor's opinion.
Jim, any final comments before we take action?
Yeah, I don't, I really don't have any additional thoughts at this point. You know, we could go either direction. We could either, depending on how long Keith's review might take, you know, we could consider this at another meeting, you know, or we could approve pending your review and essentially your reading of it, that it is legal, proper for us to proceed. So, I mean, we can go either direction, and then, you know, either direction is going to be subject to the solicitor's opinion. So, based on that, I think I will make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and the Big Spring School District with respect to a school resource officer, but pending the legal review, we're biased for legal improper by our solicitor.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll put, we'll put it right on second.
Okay, I will second the motion, no problem. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. McCray, upon review from our solicitor, he will come back to us and say, "Yes, we're fine to go," or he may say, "I have some issues." At that point, this approval, this contingent approval would not be approved, if I'm saying that.
Yes.
Had we tabled the motion, tabled that, we still end up in the same position at some point in time. What we did today, the motion we did today, pretty much takes a step out of the process and keeps the process moving. It's not going to affect what our solicitor comes up with with an opinion.
Although, I assume Attorney Brenneman's approval could come before the next meeting, whereas if you tabled it, you wouldn't be allowed until the next meeting.
Our action is to approve based on his recommendation.
Okay.
His recommendation may come back and say, "Hey, no, it's done." We have to go back to the court. I'm just trying to save a little bit of time here for these folks. If it is eventually approved, they can get on with their training and so forth.
I see.
But appreciate you coming here and speaking your opinions, sir.
Thank you. May I retire at this point?
Oh, sure.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add that I would just ask the Sheriff's Department to hold off in making any advancements on this or setting up any training dates until we get an opinion from our solicitor. And, you know, then again, if it's the wrong direction, or we can't do this, we await, then, you know, Big Spring will have to consider another alternative.
Thank you for the opportunity to make my thoughts.
Thanks for joining.
Move to the board.
Thanks. Next on the agenda is approval of motion to execute declaration of August 2016 of unfair separation benefit, county future, and RC participants. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second. I do understand this is just for one individual participant, so I don't think the plural is necessary.
Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the approval memorandum of agreement between the City of Philadelphia and Cumberland County as a participating agency for Pennsylvania Task Force One of the National Urban Search and Rescue Response. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval of contracts and grants. Items 13, aye. 13, 1, 13, 2. There's no particular questions or issues with any that can vote for it at all at once.
Mr. Chairman, if it's an order, I'll make a motion to approve item number 13, approval of contracts and grants. One and two, continues on page three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Next we have approval capital projects request, nursing home curtains for cattle billing, resident room total. Project cost nineteen thousand fourteen hundred. Is there a motion? Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have approval of general dispersments, transfer authorizations, items 15, 8, 3D. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
So.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would like to report acceptance of monthly reports from reporter Dean's Register of Wells Clerk of Courts, Conservation District, Veterans Affairs, and Change in Assessments. Next is a discussion and approval of Friends of Claremont bylaws. Jim, do you want to provide something?
Sure. Well, first of all, I'm going to make a motion to put it on the, put it before us, and then, I know we have some Friends of Claremont who appear today. If they'd like to make any comments, maybe we'll allow them to do that. At this point, I would like to make a motion to approve the form of the bylaws for Friends of Claremont and authorize the preparation of the workers' incorporation for Friends of Claremont Nursing and Rehabilitation.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Please, I'm going to make some comments here, but on the motion, on the motion.
I don't understand.
Okay, well, on the motion that we just made, it's not before us, so, okay, so that's, I just wanted to speak on it. First of all, I want to like to give the, you know, Friends of Claremont, you know, did you have anything else that you would like to add or any other input you would like to provide relative to these bylaws? I don't want to put anybody on the spot. I appreciate, first of all, I will thank everyone for their patience as we go through the particulars of the bylaws with respect to the Friends of Claremont nonprofit that we're seeking to create for the purpose of generating charitable donations to enhance and supplement the amenities available at Claremont for the benefit of the residents of Claremont. In particular, I do want to thank our solicitor, Keith Brenneman, our chief clerk, Gaya Thomas, Helen Schultz, who's with us today, also Bob Ritter from Claremont, who's with us today, Deputy Controller DeGrosa, Claremont resident council members Jan Sponsler and Kim Fuhr, and community partners Dick Golden, who's with us today, and some folks who weren't with us this morning, D. Densler, Barbara Fordy.
D. Dear.
Barbara, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't say this.
Sorry.
And Dave Gordy, I guess is not the only member of the court group who isn't there. Of course, I think it's important that we recall the seed that was planted for this endeavor arose as a result of the generosity and the request and the will of Mrs. Evelyn Brenneman, who before she passed peacefully in her home in Boilin Springs at the age of ninety-eight, had spent some time as a resident of Claremont. In her will, she left our county nursing home a gift of two-hundred sixteen thousand, three-hundred forty-nine dollars, forty-one cents. And about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that is now being expended on the development of a beautiful garden, an outside walking and sitting area. And an opportunity to see some of the work that's underway last week, and that's all eventually for the enjoyment of all current and future residents of Claremont. The balance, as I understand, will at some point be transferred to Friends of Claremont, the Friends of Claremont nonprofit that we're working to set in motion today to build on Mrs. Brenneman's kind gift for further enhancements and amenities at Claremont now and into the future. We had known previously that Mrs. Brenneman had been the widow of the late Earl L. Brenneman, who had served two terms as a Cumberland County Commissioner in nineteen forties. What I did not know until just recently was that Mr. Brenneman had also served as Chief Clerk of this county following his tenure as a Commissioner for nearly twenty-eight years, from June nineteen forty-nine until January nineteen seventy-six. Mr. Brenneman passed at the age of ninety-three in nineteen ninety-six, twenty years after his service to the people of Cumberland County as both a county commissioner and as chief clerk. Mrs. Brenneman herself had also been a former employee of this county and was employed by the state, working, as I understand, as a stenographer and hopekeeper. So, it helps us a little bit more to understand the generosity, unite the gift, and the commitment of Mr. and Mrs. Brenneman's lasting public service to give back to the public good, to the Father of the Passion. So, now we said all that, some of the little provisions that we worked on with respect to draft bylaws, one of the most important ones to me was that the meetings of Friends of Claremont be open to the public, be open to the residents of Claremont, and be held at Claremont. And so, the revised bylaws contain the sunshine provision along with public access to agendas, minutes, and the 501(c)(3) expenditures and financial records, and the opportunity at all meetings for public comment, subject to reasonable limitations. And there's also a provision that would enable the Friends of Claremont board to protect the confidentiality of any contributor who wishes to remain anonymous. And there were a couple other minor changes with respect to the makeup of the initial board directors. And I know that, having had the opportunity to talk with both Kim and Jan, there had been an interest that perhaps two members of the Claremont Residence Council served on the board. What these draft bylaws incorporate is the fact that What these draft bylaws incorporate is the fact that there'll be at least one member of the Claremont Residents Council initially. But the fact that the meetings were open to the public, open to the residents, that doesn't preclude anyone's participation in essentially the discussion with respect to the business of Friends of Claremont, both in terms of the fundraising and also how dollars will be expended. So, and then there's a provision that following the initial year that this organization gets underway, that, you know, the initial seven directors could actually expand to thirteen directors, and that's when there is an opportunity in the revised bylaws for a second representative from the Residents Council who could serve on the Board of Directors. And, you know, once we get done with what we're doing here, essentially, it's hands off, the commissioners don't, don't have any role here. This is, you know, an arms-length independent organization. But what was important to me, especially with respect to the sunshine provisions, is that this is a public facility, and so I think the public has a right to know, and I think that the public has a right to, you know, participate in any discussions of the Board of Directors. I did have a chance to talk to all of the four members, and again, I want to thank my colleagues for their indulgence and patience, but all of the members of the board were at least expressed to me that they were supportive of the revisions, and so, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the additional time. If you have any, answer any questions, or if you're ready to vote?
Any questions? Yes, sir.
With these changes, does it allow for input from the commissioners who are then serving at the time of various decisions?
Well, as you know, the bylaws themselves, they can talk in terms of certain expenditures when they reach a certain point that have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. We do have, under these bylaws, we will have a delegate representative from our office who won't have a voting member, won't be a voting member, but will be at least at the meetings, you know, taking place, so.
Yes.
You know, and the fact that they're open to the public, I suppose that any one of us could show up whenever we want to.
Okay. So just so there's input, or the opportunity to input.
I think in the, from the beginning of this effort, intention was to optimize independence of the board so that it could use its talents, dedication and discretion. Certainly was never the intention to conclude open and beneficial, mutually beneficial communication between the county and the county.
So simple, Jim, in that agreement, as I read it, the county commissioners will have someone there not to vote, but just to be there to listen, provide some input. So I think, based on what I can tell in that agreement, we have all the bases covered, and folks who work on this agreement, I tip my hat to all of it, because it's, you know, I'm not an attorney, but what I read in the chair seems very verbal, very open, very transparent. It will let you folks do what you want to do.
I do want to, can't thank our solicitor, who went back to trolling the board a couple of times, and just makes some of the fine tuning. And hopefully we're going to get a good course down. My understanding of this following this motion today is that it's going to take a little bit of time to get approval from the IRS, and I think I've already been talking about that. It could take up to three months, but at least we got the, you know, the ball rolling here, and I know that there's, you know, next month, October twelfth is that the, we're going to be eleven, we're going to have the dedications, we can announce that this is on its way, and so.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table, a second, Gary, any closing comments?
There we go, just as much as.
All right, then all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, one other I haven't related, if I could, I understand that there's a need for authorization of the naming of the garden and the, you know, walk area that's currently being developed, and a need for our authorization to name that in memory of Evelyn T. Brennaman, and if it's an order, I would like to make that motion, we authorize the naming of that area in the memory of Evelyn T. Brennaman.
Is there a second, or is there any comment?
I don't see.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I'd just like to report executive session for how long, September eighth, personnel issues, September ninth for vacation issues. Is there any other business to be brought in front of the court? Gary, not is there a motion or adjournment, or adjournment? Thank you.